Good morning. Welcome to the December 22nd meeting of the Board of Franklin County Commissioners.
Commissioner Stottlemeyer?
President.
Commissioner Harris?
President.
Chair Weymeyer?
Vice Chair Dickinson?
President.
Commissioner Dunn?
President.
All right, please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by the invocation with a special guest this morning.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and just as for all.
Merry Christmas, all.
Merry Christmas.
Let us be in a spirit of prayer. God of the universe, we give you thanks for this time of the season, this time of the year where the days grow short and the nights grow long, where you have provided rest for your earth and rest for your people. May we indeed rest and renew and be ready to embark as the light gets longer and longer each day. May we be shining lights of love and care for our fellow human beings. God, we give you thanks for the season in which we celebrate Christmas and Hanukkah and Kwanzaa. We give you thanks that light is the presence in all of these celebrations. And God, just as Saint Nicholas was a person who followed you, who showed compassion and love and had gift as a character, may we indeed be in the giving spirit, not with monetary things, but giving of ourselves for the betterment of human beings, the betterment of our community, the betterment of Franklin County. God, may we indeed give of ourselves and share the love of this season. I pray for the commissioners that you may guide them this day as they continue to work on behalf of this county. We give you thanks and pray a blessing upon them and the homes that they represent. May you indeed protect all the residents here in Franklin County. We give you thanks and praise in the name of the one that we celebrate this season. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Do we have any correspondence or an organizational business this morning? No. And any public comments this morning? All right. Our consent agenda consists of the minutes from the December 15th meeting and tax change orders in the amount of $87.16. We have motioned to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Commissioner Stottlemeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Vice Chair Dickinson?
Yes. All right, we have a fairly short meeting this morning. The first item is to consider approving up to $9,500 for the purchase of a new 40-foot by 48-foot cargo container for the storage of refurbished bicycles associated with the Lake Region Solid Waste Authority Adopt a Bike Program. David Lee is going to share his.
This particular item, and before I start, we have Shay, our executive director with the Lake Region here. She might want to discuss this as well. But earlier this year, we went through KDHE. Place the storage trailer that we currently have, trailer that we have is, aren't secure. It's really. With a storage container that would be weather-tied, be secure, those sorts of things. We have done a little bit of research on this. We were awarded the grant of up to $7,500. That I'm asking for approval. That is. 40-foot container. Like one that's 48. Harder to come by and a little more expensive, so I would like budget authority to be able to. Program. Bicycles within the six-county region and periodically will those bicycles taken up to prisons. Which one is it?
Ellsworth.
Ellsworth, yes. They will refurbish those and then we give them. Great program.
As a part of this process, we would expect to advertise the program, have a ribbon cutting, those sorts of things. Once we get the trailer or the container, get it set up on site and do those sorts of things. Shay, is there anything that you would like to say? Okay. And so I've attached in the, in the, in your packet is the grant award letter and contract through KDHE, so it has all the information associated with that. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So even though our motion is for $9,500, and I guess we probably should clarify that it's, no matter how much it is, we're only, it's 25% is what we are. So even if it was $7,500, we would still owe 25%.
Yes, and that 25%, that portion, a lot of that is, can be in kind. The, some of the, like preparing the site for the container, that is part of our matching money. So it's not necessarily a cash contribution. It has to be services in kind, so.
We also did for the advertising pamphlets. That was included in part as well.
So all of those expenses go towards our 25% match?
So if a taxpayer was concerned that we were spending $9,500, we truly aren't paying $9,500. Yeah, absolutely.
Yes.
Awesome.
So. Right.
This is very much cleaning up an area that needs to be cleaned up.
That is definitely part of the, gonna be part of the process here.
What relation to the scale house will this, will this container be located at?
Actually, it will be located at our Public Works Yard. That's currently where the existing trailer is now. And we will, we will build a nicer pad site in that general location where it is currently.
Okay.
Yeah. So although we take applications and, you know, bikes are able to be dropped off at the transfer station, we house, we house them there at our Public Works Yard.
Okay. I will be abstaining from the vote when he votes, too.
Okay, I was just figuring out we had enough people, then if we had the same, we'll be all right. All right. Any other questions? All right, so an affirmative motion in support of this item would be I make a motion to approve up to $9,500 for the purchase of a new 40-by-48 cargo container for the storage of refurbished bicycles associated with the Lake Region Solid Waste Authority Adopt a Bike Program.
Go move. Sagan.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottlemeyer?
Aye.
Vice Chair Dickinson?
Yes. All right, our second item is to consider for approval passing a resolution number 21-59 approving Franklin County to join the statewide litigation regarding the opioid epidemic. Derek?
Yeah, so there's nationwide litigation right now against certain pharmaceutical manufacturers regarding their contributions to the opioid epidemic. The state of Kansas has been involved in that litigation, and I think there are even local subdivisions within the state that have been as well. That litigation is in the settlement phase, and they're working through how the settlement proceeds are gonna be distributed. And the more local municipalities that participate, the larger the share that the state gets, and it also is what renders us eligible to receive a portion of these funds. And so there's no real downside. I mean, we are waiving our rights to sue these manufacturers individually by entering into this agreement, but that's not something I would have ever anticipated us doing anyway. And so this really just makes us eligible to receive part of that pot of money. Here to take any questions that you have, they're still defining what those funds can be used for, but they have to be related to the opioid epidemic. So I'm thinking Health Department would, would be eligible to receive them, the Sheriff's Office, Community Corrections, maybe even the County Attorney's Office are all departments that we could funnel some of that money to, to help with programming for these problems that we're having locally.
Does it need to stay in our organization? What about Elizabeth Layton Center? Can that?
Yeah, I think that's, that's still being worked out, but I would assume that that would be an eligible use, yeah. And I don't know that we're guaranteed money, but I think it's highly likely that if we execute these agreements, which I can do myself, provided that the board passes the resolution.
I know the city did, has done it, and they, yeah, assumed that we were going to join them, so.
Yeah.
Any questions?
Is a lot of litigation still ongoing, or did they make a settlement with the manufacturers already?
Yeah, I think the two primary manufacturers, they have reached a settlement. And that's, and the state AG's office in conjunction with the League of Municipalities and the Kansas Association of Counties has come up with this MOU, which as part of this resolution, you're authorizing me to sign this MOU. And again, that's what allows us to receive a portion of these settlement proceeds, so.
I think it's a good deal.
Yeah. Yeah, there's no downside to us executing this, so.
The downside is we have a lot of citizens that are addicted to opioids.
Oh, yeah.
So anyway. All right, so the approval of this motion would be I make a motion to approve Resolution Number 21-59 approving Franklin County to join the statewide litigation regarding the opioid epidemic.
What would you approve?
Commissioner Dunn?
Yep.
Commissioner Stottlemeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Vice Chair Dickinson?
Yes. And our last order of business is a housekeeping item that we take care of every year concerning our year-end transfers. Janet?
Commissioners, I had already let you know this was gonna be coming before you. You look at this every year at the end of the year. So basically what we ask you to do is to adopt this resolution that's presented before you. It lists the amounts that you have put into your budget previously when the 2021 budget was set. And then this authorizes us to transfer up to that amount. I work with each, each department that's listed on here and make sure that on the last day of the year that they feel they have adequate funds in their budget with the remaining expenditures that will need to be taken out of there, like in, in January. And then we execute these transfers based on the funds that we have left available. But this is, at this time, we believe that all of these transfers will be able to be made. But again, we'll review them next week when we're on the last day of the year to make sure that we have enough funds in those accounts to make these transfers. As you know, these are what keeps, keeps our reserve balances trending higher. You'll see there into capital, capital equipment reserve, that first line will be transferring 240,000. And then capital improvement, our main reserve account, we're planning to transfer 704,000. And then there's some other funds on down continuing into those two major reserve funds. So, but as you know, we regularly spend money out of those for projects. So this is an effort to keep those moving in the right direction and to replenish funds that we spent out of there previously. I would answer any questions about that.
I would just chime in, and I say this every year, but I'm incredibly proud of those numbers. You know, when we started doing this back in, I believe it was 2016, we didn't even have a million dollars total in our reserve funds. And now with, thanks to the hard work of our department heads and elected officials, we're able to transfer about a million dollars a year into reserves. And that is how we're able to do these big projects without incurring debt. You think, we spent several hundred thousand on the District Court HVAC, all the work we've done in this building to the parking lot, gonna be doing some work out at the Public Workshop. All of that, we're able to pay cash for thanks to these large reserve transfers. And as Janet said, they're trending upward, and they're still not. I mean, technically, where, where you would like to be, what would be considered a safe reserve amount, we're still not quite there, but we're getting there. And so appreciate all the hard work from our team on, basically, cutting back in other areas so that we can make these reserve transfers.
Any questions?
Is there a rule of thumb kind of for reserve balances you said you're trying to achieve?
It's 20, 20%, is it not, Janet? 20%.
20 to 25%? Yes.
Of your annual operating budget.
And that's basically for your rating, for like your bond rating?
Yes.
Yeah.
And our bond rating has improved over that time, but if you say we have a roughly $30 million operating budget, 20% of that would be 6 million, correct? Yeah, so that's, that's really the threshold we're trying to get to. We don't wanna get much above that because you sit there with a lot of money in your accounts. That's not a great thing because we're talking about taxpayer dollars. So that's not necessarily where we wanna be either, but we wanna hit that threshold so that anytime we have to go through the bond rating process, we'll have an ideal bond rating. But also, it's just cash on hand for any unexpected events, which, as you all know, happen from time to time, so.
And I love the fact that we've also got a pretty good handle on the capital improvements that we really needed to do. I know the city every year has a capital improvement plan, and there are things on it that have been on there a long time that just keep pushing, get, keep getting pushed back, but it seems like we are able to get ours. Yeah, knocked out and still be able to have a good operating budget.
Like Derek said, that really is the hard work of all the department heads and elected officials, like really paying close attention to their budget and, and staying within their budget because we couldn't do this without them.
All right, so an affirmative action would be to, I make a motion to adopt the resolution to approve the year-end transfers.
I like that motion.
Just a second.
I'll second it.
Commissioner Stottlemeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Vice Chair Dickinson?
Yes. All right, that moves us on to staff reports. Derek?
Yeah, a couple of things real quick. Later today, Janet and I are going to meet with our consultant, with O'Brien's, regarding ARPA stimulus funds. As you know, we haven't spent any of those monies yet, and we haven't even really started having a robust discussion about how we wanna spend those funds. I will tell you, we, we've got a lot of options. We've heard from a lot of folks. The purpose of the meeting today, though, is we are considering potentially, and this will obviously run through you, but potentially using a portion of that. David's had some engineering work done out at the shop related to the, you know, we've talked about what the yard looks like and potentially redoing a lot of that. A lot of that engineering work is related to storm water removal, things that we believe would be an eligible use of those funds. So Janet and I are gonna work through that with our consultant, make sure there are no issues there. If there aren't, then what will likely happen is we will be in front of you requesting authorization to use. And we've got just over $5 million, I believe. This won't be a huge amount of that. But that's, I mean, I think we've all talked quite a bit about that, the yard, and moving buildings around, and all believe in that project. So certainly believe that this would be a good use of those funds, so. And then only other thing I have is you can see the, the Christmas bags up there. We left those in your chair yesterday. Our employee retention committee visited. I believe we went to every single county building, handing those out. Unfortunately, we weren't able to greet every single county employee. We have folks that are taking much-needed vacations this time of year. And then we have our 24/7 employees, some of whom just weren't on shift. But very pleased with how that went. Our employees certainly appeared grateful. And a lot of work went into this. I mean, the, the purchasing of the bags and, and, you know, 240 bags by the time you stuff paper into all of them, I mean, it, it took quite a bit of time. So I appreciate the effort of those on that committee bringing this to life and making it happen. That's really all I have today, I am. Thank you.
All right, Casey?
Good morning. I feel like a broken record, but COVID numbers are through the roof again. We, I believe there's 172 active cases as of this morning, and we're seeing lots of testing, which is a good thing that people are trying to get tested before the holidays instead of just assuming that they're not positive and not getting tested before the holidays when they see everyone and their family. So we are seeing lots of, lots of people testing. That's all I have about COVID. And, oh, I do have one other thing. Even the schools have seen huge outbreaks. I know Lincoln Elementary School was under a mask mandate again this, this week because they got over their threshold of the number of students in the school that had COVID, which I think is like 4.6% or something, so. And we're seeing it at other areas, schools as well, lots of outbreaks. So unless you have other questions about COVID, that's all I have about COVID.
Is there a testing clinic somewhere around?
We have testing right here in the trailer.
Do you have to have an appointment?
Yeah, you just call the Health Department. They'll get you in the same day unless you call it like 3:00 PM because we stopped testing at 3:00 PM, but they'll get you in the same day.
What's, what's the turnaround for results?
That depends on the state and how backed up they are. So our tests are picked up at 3:00 every day, which is why they stop testing at 3:00 by the state courier system, and then they take it to the state lab. And it has been taking 48 to 56 hours to get results, so.
And they're probably getting slammed this time of year.
Yeah.
I know some commercial airlines and cruisers and stuff require
Right.
a test before you can go. And you give a certificate that they've been tested or something like that?
They will get something that they'll get, actually, it comes by text. So they can show it on their phone when they go on vacation, but we can't guarantee that they'll get the results in 48 hours right now with the state, so.
Okay. Thank you for the effort on the Christmas presents.
Yeah, absolutely. Happy to do it. And I was just gonna mention that at the visitor's center, we had appreciation last Friday afternoon, and it was well-attended and well-received. It went really well, so.
All right. Paul, do you have anything? All right. Kenny? No. David?
Okay, so we had, we had about 12 of our staff members working till about 8:30 last Wednesday night. We took care of anywhere from 50 to 60 trees that fell down around the county. Those folks did such a good job that we didn't have any, normally we get calls overnight. We had folks on standby, ready to deploy if we received those calls, but we did not get a call, which is, is great. So our folks got plenty of rest. And then we were back out Thursday, again, taking care of trees that, that had fallen and on some of the lesser roads and, and getting those pushed to the side. We've got piles of trees and debris all over the county that as the weather is more suitable to burning, we'll get out and take care of those, those piles as time allows and conditions allow. From a other work standpoint, we finished the ditching project on Haskell, west of Eisenhower. That looks really, really good. And the project on Iowa north of Douglas, we have finished raising that road. We've got more work to do there yet. We've gotta get some agreements with some landowners and whatnot to, to be able to finish that, so we're working on that. We've got some crossroad tubes to put in as, as a part of that project. We've also spent several days cleaning up a site on John Brown in Utah, that funny little triangle corner. We've gone in and cleared most of that site. We still have work to do, so that will be a, kind of an ongoing thing that we'll work on over the next month or so. And then really the time between now and the end of the year, our guys are gonna be working on some, you know, as the, the weather remains good, dry, we've got some last-minute work orders that we're kinda working through right now. So our folks are busy and looking forward to the holiday.
That one-ditch project is on my, is on my mile, and I, I'm not that I want a torrential rain, but we're kind of excited to see what it can, I mean, it looks really, really good.
It should, should be a drastic improvement for that area. And, and, you know, those are the kinds of projects that we've done all over the county this year. We've done, I don't have the total numbers just yet, but we've done a lot of those types, very similar to what we did there. In all, all nine of the blade districts, we've done lots of projects like that.
And I told my husband, I said, this is the kind of thing we, we'd like to do everywhere, but we're just, we haven't done it.
Yeah.
And so we're, you know, so, but we do it where it really needs to be done, and we'll, we'll get there.
When you have 1,000 miles of, of road and 2,000 miles of ditches, you can do a lot of work every year and still not come close to meeting the demand that's out there. And that's where we're at now. We, our, our folks do a great job, though.
Janet?
The only thing I have to add, since Sheriff Richards is not here, they did have a promotion at the, at the jail yesterday, and they swore, I sworn in Mattie Gardner as their new sergeant at the jail, and she'll be the second-in-command at the jail, so they did that yesterday. So that's something to celebrate.
All right, Commissioner's comment. Dunn?
I hadn't been having meetings last, but I thought I'd bring up a little update. I appreciate the effort on, on Shay and David getting to this point on the cargo trailer deal. I think it'll be a great addition to the, looks a lot nicer than that little piece of junk we'll get it out of there. It's out there now. It'll take a while to make the transfer, but want to thank both of them for all their efforts towards that. And like I said, anything you mean by might bring up a little update on the Lake Region RC&amp;D. Here lately, you know, I mentioned a while back that we were putting together a program with all the six counties and the economic development people. We had a meeting a couple of months ago, and Paul and I both thought it went really well. And all the other counties thought it went really well, something they'd never thought about doing before. So Julie Turnipseed, the head of Anderson County, is setting up our next meeting, which will be in January. And we're inviting all six, and Paul's coming up with some other ideas, maybe to bring in some outside entities that could, you know, Commerce Department or somebody that would be of interest to all six counties at one time. And how often can you get all six, you know, economic development people? And it's a good thing for Department of Commerce, too, because it gives them the opportunity to talk to a big group versus go around individually and try and meet. Besides that, we're gonna pay for their lunch, too, if they show up to RC&amp;D well. Kind of another thing, you guys know we do the Hunters Feeding the Hungry Project with the state of Kansas. And the, right now, we have delivered 3,000 pounds of deer meat out to all the, I delivered 450 pounds the other day. out to all the, I delivered 450 pounds the other day to Hope House out here, one of them. And our best we've ever done is 3,600 pounds in a year, and we're already at 3,000. And I know I got another 500 to pick up in Mount City, so this will probably be a big record year. And I can tell you that all the entities, with the circumstances, with everything going on, and are really receptive to getting this and tickled to death to get it. And just to follow up on Derek and Dave's work on this job, on the project, even we're talking about, we all talked about a month ago, cleanup we was wanting to do down on John Brown on Burt's Ben's curve there. It don't sound like they've been slow getting to it because they haven't been. They just finally got to the point to get permission. Derek took months and months and months of trying to even find out an owner or anything. Finally, we got, he got their signature to start, and it wasn't two days later, David was out there with his crew, starting to work on it, and they made a wonderful, I got, I've had three phone calls from people telling me, you got to go over there and look and see what you guys are doing, you know? And I was hoping it was for the right reason, and it was. They've cleaned the ditches out, they took away the entrances out. The only lady wanted to leave two trees, and I have no reason to rhyme why, those two trees. But anyhow, that's what she wanted to leave, so. And so, David, like I said, did a heck of a job, and Derek, too. I mean, as soon as we got permission to move in there, the guys jumped right on it, so. That's all I got.
All right, Roy?
I just want to wish everybody happy, happy Christmas and holiday season, and appreciate county's work during windstorms and stuff like that. It's quite an effort cleaning up after those things, and just appreciate what our employees do for us on a daily basis. That's all I have.
I haven't been to any meetings, but the city of Ottawa had a very lengthy study, meeting last Wednesday and a lengthy study session on Monday. They did their budget management that they do at the end of the year. They did some employee service awards, which I'm hoping that we can get started again on ours back again because we like to recognize our employees. They had a couple of long-term employees that they honored. One was a 49-year employee for the electric department, and then also, and then also Wendy Lee, they honored her for her 26 years of service, some other items of business. And the last one was kind of interesting. They've been talking for several weeks about changing their municipal code about having pit bulls within the city limits of Ottawa, and they ended up leaving it as it is, and so pit bulls are still no longer allowed in the city limits, to be owned in the city I think that's about it. I did, besides the employee service awards, I had been wondering, and this is for you guys, about having a, inviting all of our department heads to a luncheon. The city of Ottawa does there at Christmas time, that's a very busy time of year, but I was wondering about doing it right after our reorganization business meeting in January. Then, if we have a new commissioner, you know, we're all here. I did send that information to Colt and asked him what he thought of it, and he said, I think that is a lovely idea. And I had to look and go, did I send this to the right person? Because I can't, but, no, I did send it to Colt, and he said, he thought it was a lovely idea. So, anyway, I didn't know what you all thought about doing something like that. If we had a dinner like that, we actually couldn't go to a restaurant, could we? Because that would, would that affect our open meeting thing? If we had something catered here, we could do something.
Well, you can have an open meeting anywhere, you just have to notice it up, and so, we would have to post some kind of notice. My bigger concern, and to be very clear, I think it's a great idea, I'm happy to accommodate that, but we are also very much in a COVID surge right now.
That's true.
And that's my bigger concern with potentially doing it in January, is I might caution the board, maybe we just wait and get through this surge and then potentially look at doing it. But we could do it here, we could, you know, I know, Don, you held a great meeting over at Primetime Grill. They have a room that I suspect we could all fit in if we wanted to do it there, so you guys tell us what you want it to look like, we can make it happen, we can notice it up. But I think the bigger thing is, do we get through this surge? And I think we probably ought to, but.
Well, I didn't want it to be the responsibility of HR, which they often do that. I'm like, if it's our dinner, I don't want to put it off on them and say, okay, but we want you to do this dinner for us, you know? But you are right, we really are. I know what I'm asking this morning because Omicron is here, so, yeah, you know, so, yeah, so maybe not right, I think it's a great time, but you're right, maybe not this time.
I do, does the four of you, are you on board with the idea when the timing's right?
Yeah, when the timing's right. I mean, I've been always.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, you've been asking.
Have been asking for a long time to do, try and do something, you know? I guess I'm just too much old-school, but I can remember we used to do it all the time, and you don't know how much you miss that direct contact. I mean, I know we're, they're still running their business, they're still, everybody's still doing what they should be doing, but I still think it's, this occasion would be a good deal, but wait until we feel safe about it.
And then, the only other idea I had, I wondered, I know, I went to the state meeting last week, and a lot of the counties have their state legislators come to their commission meetings before the legislative session starts or at the beginning of the session to kind of, an idea, you know, kind of, I didn't know if that, again, was something, we, I don't know if they'd come, I don't know at this point.
Yeah.
I know Mark's not getting really, I don't know.
Yeah.
We used to do that, have our legislators come to our meeting or sometime during the year to give us an update.
Or even a study session, or, I don't know, but I don't know if we're too late now at this point, but, are we having a study session on Monday? Is that our schedule?
That's, that's the plan, yes, is to have.
That we are planning on having a study session on Monday?
We are planning on, I believe I have an item, yes. Yeah.
All right.
I just have one other thing Shay shared today, and I don't know if she had any other comments, I don't know, if she would like to say something for us.
No, I'm happy. I'm here for support, things are progressing and moving, and that means that I have something to do in the new year, to get that container, and I can do a ribbon cutting and do some promo and start getting into the other counties to promote it there as well. Just our central hub, that it's nice when we have something to declare and show off in order to be able to have them in our board and.
Shay, why don't you come up? They weren't all involved in the deal, that if we just, the ribbon cutting we just did over in Ossawatomie, why don't you give a little vocal, I mean, you're on, you're on TV.
Appreciate you driving all the way over here, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, actually, we did earlier, I guess it was early, early in the year, there's two grants that KDHE puts out each year. One is the Waste Tire Grant, and the other is the Solid Waste Grant. So, the Adopt a Bike program is going through the Solid Waste Grant. And previously in the year, we put together a collaboration in Miami County with the city of Ossawatomie, their Rotary Club, the Pride Committee that's there, and the Chamber of Commerce with the Lake Region, and we collaborative affair, some people donated money, some people donated materials, other, we had volunteers who did things. And it was, we put into 11 benches in the community, so they're all made from recycled tires, and they're put around the community. We had three out at the lake, and then the rest were in the community, put them at bus stops around town as well for the school kids, so they had someplace that was the designated area that they could sit, that'd be safe, put their items down, and we all did that with enough lovely ribbon-cutting ceremony where everybody got to be there to be able to share kind of their experience and their part in the project. So, it was a fantastic success story of collaboration, to be able to focus on the benefits of recycling, especially used tires, and be able to put that back into the community in a nice, green way. So, it was fabulous to be able to have that, and Don came to be able to represent the Lake Region for us as well.
Thank you.
Were those, they made in Kansas, those?
Yes, they are. The only company who's making them in Kansas is Champlentire, so they're in Concordia. So, yeah, because that's one of the things they want, of course, be able to promote, is that you're purchasing from within the state as well for those grants funds.
Okay.
So, we would like to do that sort of similar thing once we have the container, in this case, it, obviously, we want to have nice weather when we go do that, we start to invite people, and it'd be nice to get past that surge, too, but at least it would be an outdoor event, to be able to recognize those partnerships that we have with all of these other organizations that are supportive of this, that are either application locations, or we want to be able to grow our donation locations so that not everybody has to travel to one location to donate a bike, you could go to maybe select locations in the county to be able to do that. So, that's one of the things that ribbon-cutting can be able to help, is to announce this new surge, this new opportunity to be able to put that out into the other counties as well.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, do we ever have any other business that we need to bring up? Otherwise, Merry Christmas to all, stay safe, and enjoy your holidays, don't get sick, and I would call for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor? Any opposed? All right, we're adjourned.